All right, several announcements here this evening. Had a couple of calls and wondering myself about the traffic out there after work today and before the council meeting going over the bridge. And I'm told that there was an accident and it's not bridge construction but an accident, so in case anybody's wondering. Also, I want to extend condolences to several people. One is the family of Pete Woodworth and the family of Al Smith. Al passed away today, I'm told. And also Michelle Alexander's grandfather, which is the reason why she's not here tonight. These are all good people that have served their communities well and made their communities better and condolences to their family members. Also want to mention too that election filing ends tomorrow at 5:00, so if anybody has a hankering to run for office, they can still do that tomorrow until 5:00. And then we have a couple of retirements I'd like to mention. First is Officer Steven Becker. Steve is not here tonight, but I'd like to read the following. Steve started with the Winona Police Department in June 1993 and retired on May 29, 2018 after 24 years of service. Steve has been an exemplary employee who has shown great dedication to his work and provided valuable service to our community. His diligence to observe details has aided in the apprehension of countless suspects over the years. He was very knowledgeable of local ordinances and infrequently used state statutes and was a valuable resource to his fellow officers. He was a reliable officer from his first to his last day of employment and he will be missed. And then I would like to read the second one here. The second retirement we recognize tonight is Arlen Runnigan. Arlen started working for the city in February 1977 and retired today, June 4, 2018. Arlen started work as a street maintenance worker and soon after, in July 1978, he accepted a job as the garage, in the garage, as a mechanic. While he worked, enjoyed his work as a mechanic, his goal was to advance to the superintendent position and he prepared himself by taking business classes at the technical college while working full-time. He was promoted to the superintendent's role in April 1988. As the garage superintendent, Arlen was responsible for the oversight of the city's vehicle fleet. The size and depth of the fleet has grown over the years as technology and needs have changed. Arlen commented at his recent retirement celebration that when he started as a street worker, they dug ditches by hand. Today, we use backhoes and loaders. While superintendent, Arlen worked to keep up with new technology and made sure that whatever vehicles the city acquired, the mechanics could handle the maintenance. Today, the city's fleet consists of 200 vehicles and numerous small engines, including lawn mowers, chainsaws, and weed whips. Arlen recently recalled his first big city purchase of a $400 lawnmower and how nervous he was. "I wanted to make a good investment for the city," he said. We probably still have it. I don't know. "Arlen, you've always had the city's best interests in long-term investments and your commitment to the bottom line of the budget may have been a struggle at times, but it has always been appreciated. Thank you for your 41 years of service and dedication to the city of Winona." And I do have a certificate here I'd like to present. Along with our appreciation. Thank you very much. Good job. Do you want to add anything?
Mayor and council, I just want to thank the city of Winona and taxpayers of Winona for giving me this career opportunity. I also want to recognize some mentors I had along the way. First one was Donald Rice, my former superintendent of the garage. He kind of groomed me for it. He encouraged me to go to school, take other classes, and prepared me to get to that point of being able to take over the job. Secondly, Eugene Kyle, former street superintendent. He helped me get my feet on the ground, taught me a lot of things, and we got along great. Lastly, Bob Bowlin, Public Works Director. He trusted me. He gave me the opportunity even though he wasn't sure at the time when I was 31-years-old if I was going to be able to handle this. I said, "Give me six months, then you can decide." He was sold after six months. So it's nice to have mentors in your life, very important, and I hope I've been some mentors to some of the people out here, but there's been many good employees and I really enjoyed my career here. Thank you.
Thank you. And one final announcement. I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Lucy McMartin. I know she couldn't think of anything better to do on her birthday than attend a council meeting, so happy birthday. And that's all I have. City manager?
Arlen, 41 years. I've been blessed to have you, you know, just for the couple of years that I've been here, but you definitely mentored me in this process. I know we didn't always see eye to eye, but you usually won those disagreements and I appreciate it and really to you and your family, enjoy your retirement. Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
I also want to throw out congratulations to my brother-in-law Eric Kurska, Winona State grad who is being sworn in as the Rochester Fire Chief this evening. The third-best fire department in the state. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurley.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions request in communications, item 3.1 is the club wine and off-sale liquor license renewals for 2018.
I would move to approve the licenses that are submitted to us.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Just Al, clarification contingent upon the receipt of the certificate of insurance, I assume, is in the motion.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm guessing there are more licenses. This is just the ones that are due this year.
These are the licenses that are actually issued by the state, so they require an extra couple of weeks because we have to send them to the state alcohol and gambling enforcement and they actually sign off on them. So the next batch will be coming to the next meeting and that will be the on-sale, off-sale, and in-3-2 licenses.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.2 is a license agreement for the Faith Fest event to be held on Saturday, August 25. I would move to approve the license agreement for Faith Fest.
Second.
Motion by Pam, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Al?
I assume the event will be as it has been in the past as far as areas and the details in the license agreement.
Yes, that is correct. And Mr. Parker is here if you have questions.
I don't have any more questions, but that was my question.
Could you just tell us a little bit about the event?
Want to step to the podium? Tell us your name and address and tell us a little bit about it.
Chris Parker, address 2884 Rowland Sunset Drive, president of chapter and national president as well of Faith Riders Motorcycle Ministry. This will be the third year we'll hold the event at the man shell. Last year, we kind of had spotted rain and made it a tough day, but music went on and vendors participated. It was still a good day, growing each year, so we appreciate the city letting us use the man shell and the parking lot there to set up. It's getting more publicity as well, so I know it's getting bigger. We had about 2,000 come through. So we've done pretty well so far.
Good.
Anything else? Not all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Item 3.3 is Radiant Church Street Closure Request for July 1.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Paul?
We are going to, so this is the new rebuilt levee piece is where they want to hold the event, is that it?
You see.
That's correct. It'd be the main street and the portion before you go up to the levee.
Anything else?
Just a question to the councilman. Scholmeyer brought it up. Are there any guidelines that the city has for people who like this group wish to use that particular area?
Mayor and council, Parker Department is working on those as we speak. I just met before the pre-council night at the farmer's market as well. We're putting together some rules and regulations of the new area. It's not terribly different from previous years, but there are some things we want to be cautious about, of course, new electrical markings of the road, et cetera, and we'll be meeting with Radiant Church tomorrow morning to walk through the area and the park to go over those guidelines with them.
Thank you.
George?
I'd say it'll be a beautiful area right there and, you know, people will be asking to use it, so it's going to be a big demand.
I hope so.
Getting lots of requests.
All right, anything else?
Oh, this is really just a detail, but I would, I wonder if we could provide for people in that area more garbage cans and perhaps recycling cans right there than we have been able to do on Third Street and Main Street. I think it would be really kind of a prominent place to announce the city's commitment to cleaning up the streets and to recycling. Possible?
Mayor and council, the levee park plan has several trash receptacles in that area. The recycling, without getting into too much detail, is something that the Park Correct Department and Park Maintenance is committed to work on. We won't have specific recycling containers in that space to start with, but again, it's something that we're trying to, we work with John Howard as well, on a system to collect the recyclables. So we're working on that. That's the best answer I can give at this point.
Okay.
Obviously, extra trash receptacles are part of the plan.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.4 is the Beano's Deli Sidewalk Closure Request for Saturday, June 16.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.5 is a request by the Winona ORC to hold their Starlight Stroll on Friday, November 2.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.6 is the Walk to End Alzheimer's Street Closure Request for Saturday, September 22.
Move to approve that request.
I second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.7 is a request by Winona State University for street closures during the move-in day on Tuesday, August 21.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by Pam, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? Al?
Just like the Faith Fest, I'm wondering if this is essentially identical to the program that they've been using for the last several years?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.8 is the license agreement for the Great Dakota Gathering to be held on September 6th or 9th.
Motion approved.
Second that.
Motion by Paul, seconded by Pam. Robert is here, if you want to say anything.
Robert Parrish, 1915 Gilmore Avenue. I'm the president of the Winona Dakota Unity Alliance. This is our 15th year of the gathering. It will be held again at Unity Park this year. I'd like to invite everyone here and everyone watching at home to attend the event this year. This year's theme is protecting the life givers, so obviously our planet, but also our mothers. Basically, there is a situation going on that indigenous women are missing and being murdered at a rate much higher than any other group in both the United States and Canada. So part of the event is to bring awareness to that statistic as well. So thank you.
Okay. One of the things I've noticed in your other years too is that we provide the insurance for this event and I don't think we do this for any other events or organizations. And I support this, but I think that maybe, I don't know, maybe you have an explanation for this.
My understanding is in the past, that has been the city's donation, if you will, to the event. That's my, whether that's my understanding, I vote, how they came about.
Okay. I guess my point is that we don't, I don't think we do it for anybody else, but. Any other comments? If not, we'll vote.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.9 is the amended license agreement for the Live at the Levee event.
Move to approve the license agreement.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.10 is the request for use of Levee Park by the Ragnar Relay on Friday, August 17.
Move to approve that request.
Second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's?
Item 3.11 is a request to host a sweat crawl event at Levee Park on Saturday, July 14.
Move to approve that request.
Second that.
Motion by George, seconded by Pam.
Could someone explain what the sweat crawl is?
Does anybody hear from the sweat crawl? Patrick?
Because I think at that date, it probably, there won't be no problem generating sweat.
Mayor and council, the sweat crawl is essentially the pub crawl of the fitness world. So these types of events are popping up all over the country where they'll have a set map and then different activities at different locations. So for example, this one in particular, starting off at Winona State University, I believe out on the football field, and they'll, they'll run through some type of fitness exercise and then as a group, then they'll jog to the next spot and participate in a different type of exercise. And then by the time they get down to Levee Park and the grass, I guess they anticipate being a bit worn out because that's when they'll finish with yoga and some stretching.
And at the Island City Brewery.
Quite possibly.
Carbohydrates.
Any questions? Comments? Not? We'll vote. Paul?
Yeah, just one. So just my only concern is when however many people are running or coming across Broadway, that they look both ways when crossing, you know, because it seems like there could be a lot of traffic, pedestrian traffic at intersections.
Mayor and council, we expect the group to follow all the applicable safety laws, rules, crosswalks, stoplights. So we expect that from the group.
Okay. Anything else? George?
Similar to the pub crawl, those are all followed as well, so.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 3.12 is a request for vacation of the alley on Block 29 of the original plat. This would be to set the public hearing for Monday, June 18.
Move approval of that request to set the hearing date.
Motion by George, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 3.13 is to request a vacation of the alley on Block 48 of the original plat and to set the public hearing for June 18.
Move to approve that request to set the hearing date.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Under unfinished business, item 4.1 is to award the contract for asphaltic material to Henry G. Miggs LLC.
I would move to approve the award to Henry Miggs.
Second that.
For $76,000. Did I do that right?
I think it's $96,000.
Yeah, the low budget is, is $96,000. The budget is $76,000.
Okay, all right, okay, yeah. I approve it for $96,712. Thank you.
And 20 cents.
40 cents.
The second that.
Okay. Motion and a second by George and Pam. Any discussion?
Just a quick question. So seeing how the bids were over budget, it just seems like the prices are going up or what is happening, and this is like a 20% more than budgeted?
Mayor and council, yes, it's the unit cost that went up that much. We do our best to estimate what we think is anticipating, what's going to go up, and you notice in the next one, we were low.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's some money saved on that one. And for additional costs, we'll work for the street budget or something like that, the street construction budget, the extra money for that. But this was, our, the estimate was our best guess.
Thank you.
Anything else? George?
Now, this is our inventory stock, right?
This would be the steel coat material.
Okay.
Yep, this is what we use for steel coating streets.
Any cold mix in there too or not?
Not in this, that would be in the asphalt.
Okay. Thank you.
Pam, did you have something? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 4.2 is to award the contract for plant mix vituminous to Don Blacktop with a bid of $45,300.
Move to approve that contract resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Paul. Any discussion?
Al? Just to comment, you know, this item and the previous item, obviously something to look forward as we look at our budget for 2019 and the uncertainty that we see more and more of as far as those crude prices and we're as individuals seeing gasoline prices go up, which is reflected in some of these bids, I'm sure. One thing that I found really interesting in looking at some of the bid abstracts was that the successful bidder had a much higher transportation cost for the item than another bidder, Flint Hills Resources, which I thought was rather interesting. I mean, they were still, even with the higher cost for transportation, the quote, low bidder for that particular item, but it's just really unusual how one company in the same basic area probably can transport something $3,000 cheaper than somebody else. So just a comment and something that is reflective, again, as I said earlier, of the higher costs for fuel for vehicles and trucks and things. Thank you.
George?
So by looking at this with staff recommends 64 and we were able to purchase that for 45, then compared to the item right above, that's pretty much a wash. So balances right out.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Under new business, item 5.1 is the East Second Street Commercial Historic District Expansion Donation.
I'd go up the donation.
Second.
Move by Paul, seconded by George. I see Peter Chervitz is here. Did you want to add anything?
Please, please.
Okay. All right.
Well, I just have, so I'm curious how this will affect the ability of these property owners to develop, renovate their spaces. Does it have any impact?
Mayor and council, this donation would allow the city of Winona's Heritage Preservation Commission to move forward with stage one expansion of the East Second Street Commercial Historic District, which is the recommendation from Landscape Research, who we hired to explore the reconciliation of our historic districts over the past seven months. Their recommendation is endorsed by the state Historic Preservation Office as well supported by the Heritage Preservation Commission during their May 23 meeting. When we look at these next five, the stage one expansion, it's five different sites that have already either been deemed eligible previously or just require further evaluation and eligibility determination and then submission of the amendment. The estimate of $14,000, which has been graciously suggested as a donation by 102 Walnut Winona LLC, would get them effectively, or get the city effectively over the hump and open up opportunities for historic tax credit usage by those five properties.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
Item 5.2 is the final plat for the KNS2 subdivision.
I would move the attached resolution to be introduced.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by George. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carrie's?
And item 5.3 is managing ash for the Emerald Ash Bor in Community Forest Grant.
I would move to approve the pre-application.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Paul?
A little description of what is going to happen or what this grant proposes?
Good evening, Mayor and council. The grant would be used primarily to fund ash removal and stump grinding and the ash treatment, the insecticide you put into the trees so that beetles won't, the borrows will die. It could also be used for educational purposes as well as some tree planting, but I think the primary cost would be towards stump removal, tree removal and that insecticide.
Paul?
Jerry first.
Well, Jerry?
Not so much on this grant, but for any of the trees that are already treated already, the ones that the city treated. How long do we plan on treating those? Because I know that once we did it, it was an expense and I was in favor of it and I still am, but once you quit treating it, eventually if the bug is still in the area, then you lost the investment.
Right. It's never been determined when we were going to quit doing that. It, the label on the package says every two years. Most of the experts are saying you can treat them every three years. We've been sticking to two years at this point because the bugs are going nuts. We will be treating them again this year. It is a second, it is the, you know, third time treating them and it's been two years since we treated them last. So we're doing them this year and then two years from now, we'll have the discussion again and move to it at budget time and then see what, how long the council wants to continue doing it. Even in treating them, we're still losing a portion of those that are treated.
Right. Is there any estimate of how long until this cycle? You know?
The bugs, the bugs will never go away.
They're never going to go away.
But it will go where it's going to be a lot less pressure. Right now, we're at the peak of the pressure. The bugs are everywhere and the trees are dying all over the place, but at some point there will be less pressure, but if you want to maintain ash trees, you got to keep treating them. Chris?
Chris?
Why don't you come up to the speaker there or microphone?
So what they, what we're looking at is places like Milwaukee and Chicago where it's already waved through and right now, they're talking seven to 11-year window of not treating and it hasn't came back yet. So, you know, and from a, from a city standpoint, we want to, we're okay with loss and so if it waves back, we just pick up the injections again, protect what we save. If you lose 20 trees, 50 trees out of 1,000, that's not bad. It's something we just deal with and go back to injections until it waves through again, but you know, so far, they're not seeing it wave through. Sooner or later, it will, but.
Well, great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Sorry, Paul?
I guess I have three questions. So I seem to have noticed a couple of infected trees that are tagged in valley oaks. Valley oaks has a very high percentage of ash trees that were planted when the subdivision went in and it's going to be ugly, especially on the private land up there. Does the grant help at all with any private landowners? That's, that's one. The second question is, do we have any outlet for the, you know, the material that's coming out? Can it be used or can we find a mill or somebody who can take and take use of these trees Can it be used, or can we find a mill or somebody who can take and take use of these trees that are right at the verge of being dead and take advantage of that material?
So, right now, a lot of it is going to firewood, as long as it stays locally, and we have different people that we work with that guarantee that it'll stay in the area. We've sold some logs, it usually ends up becoming more of a pain than it's worth. I think last time around, we sold something like 24 logs from two years of cutting, and it was 800 bucks, which 800 bucks is 800 bucks, but it's also, the mills get angry, the loggers get angry, because they're city trees, they're not perfect, they have metal in them, and, you know, one saw blade costs a mill a lot of money, so that falls back to us, just with them not wanting to work with us anymore. As for private citizens, unfortunately, this grant doesn't cover that. It's something council might want to consider in the future, because there's gonna be a lot of headaches for private citizens, but that'll be up to you.
Okay, anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Kerry's?
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Al?
Thank you, Mayor. Reminder that the wonderful Winona Municipal Band Concerts are starting again, and they start next Wednesday, June 13th, at our wonderful municipal band shell at Lake Park. And I want to echo the mayor's comments and his expressions of sympathy to councilperson Alexander's grandfather, family of Pete Woodworth, and to the family of Winona's own Mr. Baseball, Al Smith. Thank you.
Kerry?
Nothing to say.
Pam?
I, at the last council meeting, I requested that city staff come up with some kind of a report on the best management practices for our potholed alleys. Since that time, I have received several more phone calls from people, which I will deal with, you know, specifically, but I wonder if that work of revising our policy has started?
It has. We'll be reporting back as soon as we have something.
Okay, thank you.
Soon. Paul?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, I just want to thank all the volunteers who helped with the events for Bike Month and our park, park and rec staff. There are a lot of opportunities for all people of all ages and skills to participate in, and I hope that continues in our week row, Bike Month in 2019. So thanks to city staff and all the volunteers that worked on that. And I want to congratulate the local high school graduates, I hope they find direction and adventure in their post-K-12 endeavors, a number of them were students of mine, and it's really quite a joy to see them finishing their K-12 career. Then, I just want to give a big shout out to all the Tri-Nona participants who are coming to town this coming weekend, do your best, and enjoy the rest of what Winona has to offer. Finally, Al Smith, by the way, was my Pee-wee American Baseball League coach with his son, Matt, in 1969 for Kendall Lumber, and we had whole uniforms that the park and rec provided every year to the Pee-wee leagues. And it was a joy to have Al as a, as a baseball mentor, and it's, I'm sorry to see his passing, that's it.
Thank you. George?
Thank you. Bringing back those baseball stories, I had Max Moloch.
Max.
And Graham and McGuire, and, you know, we had these young baseball leagues, you know, ages eight, nine, and 10, I mean, several of them, they were all there, and it was a lot of fun, and they gave you a lot of good education, and you didn't have to pay much for it, and you learned a lot from Al and Max as well, too. And I say in condolence just to those three families to Nate and his brother and the rest of his family on their father's passing, and Al Smith, who was very instrumental in helping begin the Sobieski Park Project, some of his baseball memorabilia, I believe is going to be in that building as well, too, and a long time Winona chief manager and business manager, and of course, to Michelle and her family. And congratulations, on a happier note, to Steve Becker on his retirement from the police, from the police department, I remember when he first got on, he didn't arrest me, but I remember it was a happy day when he first took the squad car out, so congratulations to him on a very good career. And also, now down to real serious business, Mankato Avenue Railroad Crossing, it was blocked over about the last two weeks, east of Franklin Street, all the way down past Louisa Street. Now, that happened about four times at least last week, and one Saturday, it was east of Franklin, whistled way down, so, I thought we had lights we were gonna put in.
Signs.
Or signs, weren't they gonna flash or whatever, they were gonna get connected, so, you know, let us know where that program is, but it's getting serious, and all of a sudden, everybody takes off racing, I know I called you that night, Mr. Manager, they were backed up onto Broadway, past Quick Trip, going up towards High Forest Street, and on the other side, way out by the hospital, so it is definitely a serious problem, and we hope someone does not get hurt as they try to escape, so... With that, everyone have a good weekend coming up. Thank you.
Next, under the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from May 21st, and a claim against the city by Pete Brugan.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by George, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.